I'd like to open the meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, the Sentinel, and the South Jersey Times who are notified of this meeting. A public notice was posted in the municipal building and on the website. I'd like to call a roll. We have Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Stepick.
Here.
Mrs. Flame is going to be late, I think. Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Mr. Malady.
Here.
Mr. Kelly is absent. Mr. Schwade.
Here.
Mr. Ranson is absent. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Travilla.
Here.
Mr. Petch.
Here.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody and wish you all a happy and healthy New Year. I'm a month late, but we didn't, we weren't here last year, last month, so we'll go with that. So I'd like to have Mr. Borelli swear in the newly appointed and reappointed members.
Should, we've got a whole bunch here. There isn't too few.
Yeah, that's right. And John, so I don't need his. And this is the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Planning Board.
Thank you.
And reorganization.
All right, John, I can read along. Hi, your name?
Hi, Judge Swade.
John Stott, Clark.
Please solemnly swear that I will faithfully.
Do you solemnly swear that I will faithfully.
And barmily and desolate.
Barmily and desolate.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office of Planning Board Member of the Township of Franklin.
The office of Planning Board Member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I'll do solemnly swear.
I can solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God.
And in this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Thank you. You can sign all yours.
Congratulations. You would sign those and just pass them to Lola over here?
This one, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to ask for nomination for Planning Board Chairman for the year 2022.
I nominate Joe Petch as chairman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Constantine for Joe Petch. Okay, can we hear a nomination to close?
Move that nominations be closed.
I'll second that.
And second was John Malady. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bruno.
All right, I'll go first. Yes.
I'll change it up.
That's fine, I want to.
Next month, I'll change it up. Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Here.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Ran, oh, sorry. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Yep. Okay. Keep flipping back and forth here. First, let's set, uh, seat the alternate this evening, uh, caller Clark for, uh, let's do for Jim Kelly, just in case Heather shows up. We'll seat him for this evening. And.
We can't.
Let's see. Help me out here. I, uh.
I'm looking. I'm looking.
Yep, yep. Got to get to the white page here. There we go. All right, let's, uh, first, let's rise, sort of, allegiance to the flag, please.
I'm so sorry. Right over there.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion, uh, for a solicitor.
Motion to nominate, uh, be Michael Borelli.
Oh, motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll, and call vote, please.
Okay, and that was motion to close the nominations as well, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes. Welcome, Michael.
Welcome.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
Make motion, we nominate Ralph.
Okay, I have a nomination for Ralph Travilla, is there a second?
I'll second.
I moved and seconded, uh, is our motion to close nominations.
I'll make that motion.
And second.
I'll second.
And then roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes. At this time, I entertain a motion for the Engineering and Planning Fund for the year 2022.
Make nomination for CME.
I have a motion for CME, is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, uh, is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded, uh, Lynn, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes. Uh, Michael, at this time, would you swear in the engineer, please?
Uh, is this for the oath for all the applications for the year?
Yeah, well, let's get Chris, uh, all in here, too.
Yeah, we're not doing this today, we're meeting.
We're not doing this, like, big or free meeting. Kidding, by the way.
Hi, gentlemen. Then raise your hand, we're swearing in for all of the testimony we've provided throughout the calendar year, all the applications. So you swear testimony about the people, be the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, I do.
And that was Chris Docman, right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, at this time, I entertain a motion for the Planning Board Secretary for the year 2022, please.
Motion to nominate Lynn refuse.
And is there a second? Moving seconded, a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, moving seconded, Lynn, would you do a roll call for your own position?
Okay, Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, entertain a motion for the official newspaper currently, it is the South Jersey Times and then the Sentinel.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion is second.
Second.
Moving seconded, uh, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
Moving seconded, uh, Lynn, roll call for that, please.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes. At this time, I entertain a motion for the official depository, uh, currently it's the Bank of Newfield, or Newfield Bank.
I'll make a motion in Newfield.
Uh, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, uh, motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
Move seconded, roll call, please.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr.
Clark.
Clark.
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes, got off the flow now.
Yeah, well.
All right, moving on, the, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the official meeting date in Times, currently it's third Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
Motion for our new time to be the third Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
Move second.
Second.
Uh, motion to close.
Close.
And second.
Second.
Uh, Mike, can we do all favor on that one, or is that a roll call as well?
You don't have to have a roll call.
You don't have to have a roll call, all right. The, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move this along a little bit. Um, motion to, uh, institute the five-minute rule, uh, for the Planning Board for 2022.
I'll make a motion.
Move second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, Lynn, we got every, all the appointments taken care of, Lynn?
Yes, we did.
Uh, we go to, we can go to regular gen, uh, gen right now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yep.
There were no resolutions, so.
Yeah.
Don't worry about that.
Minutes.
Yeah, uh, at this time, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes, uh, submitted electronically for December the 21st of 2021 and January 18th of 2022.
Make a motion.
I got a motion, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll, now I'll entertain a motion to accept a secretary report, uh, from December 31st of 2021 and January 31st of 2022. Lynn, why is it January 31st of 2022?
Typho.
Twenty-one was right, but I have eighteen, that should be thirty-one.
Eighteen, got it.
I had, don't ask, I have no idea.
All right, no problem.
The motion, yeah.
Um, okay, the, uh, motion?
Motion to approve secretaries' reports for both December as well as January.
And second?
Second.
Moving seconded, Lynn, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we move on, we, we have, the Township Committee has asked, uh, the new zoning officer, planning officer, uh, to attend the meetings, which, uh, I don't think we add this back to the time of Bob Barrera, uh, so it's a pleasure to have Rosemary. Rosemary, would you mind coming up and joining, uh, sitting next to Mike, so you're a little closer?
Absolutely, thank you.
Hi. Good. Thank you.
Mike, a piece of bookkeeping, is it necessary, as in the engineer, to swear Rosemary in for the year, or as an employee, it's not necessary?
I mean, if she testifies, she would have to be sworn in. Um, I don't know, she'll be testifying on a regular basis, um, so we can just do as needed, unless, if we're doing it now.
Uh, why don't we do it for the year, this, uh, this, just like the engine where we're covered?
Okay, that way, that's right, sure.
All right. Please.
Swear the testimony about the people, be the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. Now it'll reflect for the entire year.
For the entire year, exactly. Okay, this way we can keep on, um, didn't have an opportunity to talk to you ahead of time, so I'm, I'm kind of blind signed, but could you give us a little background of, uh, what, what you've done in the past in other towns and what you're doing here in Franklin, so the board gets a little familiar, uh, with the amount of resources that you bring to the table?
Sure. Um, I've been in local government for thirty-three years, I started out in Monroe Township in the police department for five years, then I went to the zoning office, I became a zoning officer, I went to Washington Township, I became a director of community development and zoning officer, then I went to Maple Shade, uh, for ten years, and I became a recycling coordinator, coa liaison for the municipal, um, government, uh, housing officer, uh, safety manager, jack-of-all-trades.
Jack-of-all-trades.
Yeah, pretty much, uh, learned a lot about redevelopment there, uh, that's my specialty is redevelopment, rehabilitation, development, did, um, probably a hundred million worth of new construction, uh, in one of the worst times that, you know, government was experiencing development. I focused on commercial, we know when residential was down, came back to my hometown in 2015 to do the work I did there, back home here in Gloucester County, and, um, change of administration, and I'm here with you guys in Franklinville Township, and I plan on doing a lot of work here for you guys.
All right, excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, and you come highly praised by friends in other towns.
Yes, some of my favorite bosses, truly.
Yeah. Okay, uh, let's move on, tonight there's an application, SP 21-1, for, uh, the site plan waiver on operation of a spa and wellness center, ladies.
I'm just moral support, so.
Okay. Good evening. Michael, would you swear your African English word?
Swear the testimony about the people, be the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. Yes. Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead, uh, your application is a site plan waiver for, uh, a spa and wellness center?
Spa and Wellness Center, yes, um, on nineteen sixty-four Delsey Drive, um, just in one of the suites, um, I used to work for Dr. John Cologne at Enhanced Chiropractic, and, um, just looking to have a space for a few of our therapists to continue doing massage, you know, location in town.
We should make sure we have her name for the record.
Elizabeth Reiner.
Yep.
My name's Elizabeth Reiner.
Okay.
Or Beth.
You're the advocate, not the owner.
Correct.
Okay, got it, all right, very good. Um, just hours of operation?
Um, probably Monday through Friday, um, keep our same hours that we had at our office, um, probably like nine to seven.
Nine to seven. Okay, um, employees, how many employees would you, uh, I don't know, you think?
Probably about four, five.
Is there licensing involved, state licensing involved, or, uh?
For, like, the therapists that work there, yes, they're all licensed, they all licenses, yes, and they're in insurance.
All right. Um, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, uh, the report, I, uh. Does the board have any questions? The, uh, Elizabeth, I'm familiar with the property, uh, the, the number of parking spots there, do you foresee that to be a problem?
No, um, around back.
Yeah.
There's, I don't know how many parking spots there are, but I don't think with, based on number of employees, we would probably just have, so if there's four therapists, they would each have a one person, so there wouldn't be that much, and there's a dirt lot behind there that you said I could use for, like, staff parking.
Okay, yeah, if you're gonna use, yeah, that would, that would, that would work fine.
Yeah.
If you're gonna use the, if the staff was going to park in the, you know, the exor parking lot.
Right.
That would free up the space, because obviously it's a multi-tenant, tenant building.
Right, there's an off-state, yeah.
The concern is that, uh, the amount of vehicles, but if the staff was parking in the, uh, exor parking lot, that, that would work out fine. Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Currently, how many tenants are in the building, other than yourself?
Uh, there's the all-state people, and I think it's a property management to the left side, but I've never seen anybody there, I even knocked on the door just to introduce myself, and I've never seen anybody.
So a total of three businesses is your business?
Yes, mhm.
Okay.
But that, that property management might be, I don't know if they're still active, they had a sign on the door, but I don't know if they're active.
Okay. All right, so the applications for a site, uh, site plan waiver, your pleasure?
Ask Michael, follow, things that are required.
If what's required?
If everything's been met.
Yeah, uh, well, the, Mike, is everything from a requirement standpoint been met?
Uh, yes, there was no public notice required.
Right.
You don't have to do a, a public hearing or allow public participation. The only question I would have is, you're not making any changes to the exterior?
No.
For the parking lot or nothing with drainage or anything like that?
No.
You're not aware of any drainage issues or?
Not that the landlord's told me, no.
So you're just gonna renovate the interior rooms?
Just some minor changes, yeah, some paint and, um, yeah.
You're using the existing signage, just gonna?
Yes, at the top, yeah, I submitted that.
Yeah, good to get that up.
So a site plan waiver, basically, you're determining whether there's a need for a site, and if there's a need to look at circulation or drainage, uh, or lighting or ingress and egress.
Uh-huh.
So this site has existing ingress and egress.
Correct. Yeah, existing site.
Lighting as well, you're gonna be just daytime hours for the most part.
For the most part, yeah.
Daytime. I know it was nine to seven, what days of the week was that, maybe this time?
Um, probably Monday through Friday.
Okay.
I think maybe an occasional Saturday morning if needed.
Know something?
No.
I do have a question. I don't know if, I do have a question, I don't know if this falls under us or not, but are you changing any of the interior walls for your, um, customers to go into? The egress that Mike had mentioned, will that change?
No.
Safety egress?
Yeah, Kevin, answer your question is, that would come under construction, the, uh, if they're changing the inside, that would be a, a construction demo and permit, and that would, then the egress would fall under the construction department.
Okay.
Rosemary, any comments?
No, just, um, the, uh, approval would be conditioned upon getting the CCO inspection and final zoning.
Okay, there you go, very good, thank you.
That answers that.
All right, your pleasure here. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have motion and second, Linda, roll call vote, uh, Lynn, roll call vote, please.
Okay, so that was Jake Bruno, Joe, Joe.
Joe Swade.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Mr. Schwade.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Travilla.
Yes.
Mr. Petch.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
And, uh, on a personal, I apologize, you were on the agenda last month, and, uh, I had, uh, you know, they, uh.
Yes.
Had something to take care of in my mouth.
No problem.
So I, I, you know, apologize and thank you for understanding.
Thank you, everybody.
And good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, I'm excited.
Okay, next on the agenda is the comprehensive farmland preservation plan update, uh, and at this point, I will turn it over to Ralph for the presentation.
Um, as you all remember, the older board members, there was a presentation of the draft for the farmland preservation program during the month of October's Planning Board meeting, and it was a PowerPoint presentation, we had the representative from the Land Conservatory of New Jersey, who we hired to update our plan, uh, we paid them a bid of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars for the plan update, of which fifty percent will be, uh, given back to the township through the SADC, the State Agricultural Development Committee. This plan is an element of the master plan, therefore, the plan itself has to be approved this evening. During the October meeting, we approved the draft, uh, since October and prior to tonight, the plan has been going back and forth between the state's planner and our committee, uh, which is the Agriculture Advisory Committee of Franklin Township, revising it. Uh, every one of the board members received, uh, an electronic, uh, copy, a hundred and seventy-nine pages of this plan, uh, the plan is, uh, quite complicated, it talks about our farmers, our open space, how much money we have in open space, how much we dedicate for open space, we dedicate one cent out of every, uh, one hundred dollars, uh, we have, I think, about a half a million dollars in our open space fund right now. Our open space fund can be spent in three different directions, one, farmland preservation, two, uh, open space, and, which means parks and recreation, and number three, believe it or not, historic buildings, currently this township does not have any historic buildings. So the open space, uh, fund, uh, helps keep open space, and, uh, at this time, I'll close and ask if anyone has any questions on the material that they were supposed to have read prior to this evening.
Any questions? Entertain a motion, uh, what's your pleasure at this time?
I make the motion to, uh, approve the comprehensive farmland preservation plan update.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, Lynn, uh, let's go for a roll call, please.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mr. Stepick.
Yes.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Mr. Malady.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Swade?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Travlin?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Ralph, I assume we need a resolution, then forward it to township committee to make it part of the...
I would think so. In fact, there was a handout, I thought, that had all the wherethes, if it had to be signed, that we had sent to you. Do you remember? No?
Not offhand.
Okay.
It was with...
I have a hard copy of it, though. I'll send it to you again.
And I'll forward it to Michael. Or you can CC both of us, whatever.
Okay, I will.
And if you were to hand the CC the other.
Mhm. Okay. Just, Lynn, if we can move on to correspondence, please. Let's start with the...
January 18?
January 18, yep.
Okay, no resolutions, just a lot of things from Pine Lands. They adopted new stormwater rules. John, and also John D. Mead, a new federal representative, is on their 15-member board. And they have an agenda for January 14, which is already passed. I put in the tentative planning board meeting dates, and the secretary's report for December was, we already accepted for $200.
Uh huh.
February 15, regular correspondence, resolutions, there were none, no applications. Gloucester County Soil Conservation was John and Gabriel Fox. It was completed for their application for soil erosion and sediment control plan. Pine Lands Commission had sent some more papers in for three new gubernatorial appointees joining the Pine Lands Commission. And we have two secretaries' reports for December and January. And again, December was 200, and January was zero. The additional correspondence for 215 was the Environmental Commission, their letter on Elizabeth Reiner, which was, I think I put it in the...
Yeah, it was in there.
And number two is Schoolio Engineering Services. They are doing other capital project approval for the construction of a one-story pre-standing concession building and rear toilet room addition to the existing Delsey High School building. And they're asking for the board's input. And we just received this on Valentine's Day, and we put it on as quickly as possible.
Joe, like, the reason for that is that the statute that they signed in their letters, 55D 31, which says when there's an expenditure of public funds, by a public body such as the Board of Education, they are required to send it to the planning board to review a recommendation. The planning board can do nothing. They could do nothing within 45 days, then they can proceed with their project if they wish. The board can make recommendations indicating they have some issues they'd like to see addressed or changes made, or you can simply say you have no comment on it, and it's fine as it appears. My understanding from reviewing it is it's not something they're doing right away. It's a long-range facility plan. I don't think they're looking to fund it and build it right away, but they do want to have it, have this approval, I guess, in place, for the steps in place that if they need to proceed, they can.
Correct. Okay.
Continuing on with Gloucester Soil Conservation District, Kimmy Brooks, for a new home. Approved. They have a new stamp, and it's very light, if you can't see it on the second page. Pine Lands has Highland Carpet Outlet for a certificate of filing for...
Commercial well.
Potable well, water well, yeah. And then they go into New Jersey Pine Lands Monthly Management Report, and secretary's report for February, which was $200. We've already...
So the board has to take action, then, on the Delsey question?
Yes, they would like some input.
All right. I was able to reveal it. The, I guess, let's start with the discussion and see if we're going to put it off, or if everybody had an opportunity to look at it. It's a cursory review. Does anybody have any comments on it?
I'll open. The school board voted 7-0 to approve it, so that says something. It's about a $2.4 million project, 5,700 square foot concession stand, fieldhouse, bathrooms, as well as an 1,100 square foot addition to the gymnasium for more, they call it, they don't use the word bathroom, toilet rooms?
Toilet rooms.
It's a new word in my...
Yeah, it does look a little odd.
Okay. And I think they're sending it out now, correct me if I'm wrong, for grant money. They're seeking a 45% grant, if I've read it correctly?
I think you did.
And with all engineering fees and permits, it comes to $2.9 million.
Well, if they're improving the bathrooms at the football field, to me, that becomes a no-brainer. Again, it's a cursory review.
That concession stand is in bad shape. It has window air conditioners that just run constantly, and, yeah, it's, it needs a rehab.
Building, all that stuff tied in, that building's in bad shape.
Well, if not, it's, it was approved 7 to...
7-0.
7-0.
On their board.
Says a lot. And my thought is I don't want to step on anybody's toes, because it's not an area that I'm an expert in, and they would know what they need more than anybody.
Isn't that existing concession, like, really, really old? Doesn't that go back?
It's better than the bed. Lock really old, yeah. Mike, it was a concession stand when I was in high school in 71, so that tells you how, I don't want to date the concession stand, but...
1871.
1871, yeah. 19, yeah, 19, not 18.
Well, I'm hearing that it's a positive, then.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I'm hearing, so.
All right. Unless somebody wants to table that, and is there something they want to look at? For me, at this point, I would entertain a motion on the board's pleasure at this time.
At this point, I would make a motion that this board recommends that Delsey Regional School Board moves ahead with the project with our grace and approval.
I would second that.
A motion and a second. Lynn, roll call, please.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Steppich?
Yes.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Swade?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Whoops. Mr. Clark? Yes. Mr. Travlin?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get a letter over to the engineer next week. I'll get a letter over to the other engineer so they can...
Thank you. Yep. And Ben, you're up here, Mike. I have a land use, I have a document up here that says land use liability. Would you like to go over that this evening? And I did read it, Mike.
Okay, good. Well, that's, I had asked, you know, possibly if everybody could take a look at this in advance, and we could do a shorter version.
Mhm.
So I assume everybody got a chance to take a look at it.
I liked the short version, Mike.
Okay, good. So essentially, the reason for this is that they want to, our insurance carrier wants to try to limit exposure to liability and having to pay claims. One of their main concerns is civil rights litigation, because civil rights litigation has what they call fee shifting, where even if the person filing the suit were to get $1 because they ruled in their favor, they could still get $500,000 in attorney's fees. So it's an area that causes insurance companies to be sort of squeamish. So they're concerned with civil rights. Essentially, I always start off by saying, it's really common sense. I don't think any of you who I know are going to say the things or do the things that would open up the board to liability, or to the board's members to liability, but it's always good to go over some basics. They conduct that board meetings. Obviously, you can't say something during a board meeting that shows a bias for or against an applicant, or for or against a person from the public speaking. You're to make your decisions based upon the standards that are set forth in our review letters and so forth, not on some perceived notion of who the applicant is, or who a person in the audience may be. You have to allow people from the audience to express their opinions, whether you agree with them or not, they have to have an opportunity to speak, and for that to be considered, or not considered if it doesn't, if it isn't relevant to the standards for the application. So basically, you're making decisions based upon the legal standards, which our engineer lays out in their letter, and that I advise you have on the applications. Outside of the board meetings, you should never be meeting with an applicant outside of the board meeting. That's always a, that's always a no-no. Any kind of planned meeting with an applicant, or a potential applicant. And then the harder part in a community like this, where you all live where the applicants are and the property is, is people either calling you or running into you at the wah-wah or the ball field, and I have an idea, I'd like to do this, what do you think? And I guarantee you, if you say, "Sounds like a good idea," but you have to come before the board, all they'll remember is he said it was a good idea, and they'll tell everybody that the board member said it was a good idea. So you have to politely let people know that you can't comment on it. You're one board member, the board acts as a, as a whole, and they have to follow the process. So sometimes it's hard to do, but you have to not make comments off the record that somebody's going to take as a, as you having given your approval in advance. And also, in addition, not making inappropriate or biased comments. At the meeting, you can't make them outside the meeting, because somebody hears you say something about, you know, the Presbyterian Church is coming in, but I like Catholic Church, it's better. You know, somebody hears that, and then you're, you're in trouble. So the protections that you have, you do have a couple of protections. You do have immunity, because you're what they call quasi-adjudicial body, you're acting like a judge, making hearing evidence on an application and making a decision. And as long as you make a good faith decision based upon the facts that you heard, whether somebody agrees with it or not, you're protected, if you've done that and haven't gone off the battlefield somewhere. You also have what they call the safe harbor. That has to do with conflicts, which is the other area that comes up pretty frequently. So if you, if you live within 200 feet of the property, obviously you have conflict. If your brother-in-law is running the business and is coming for the board, you have a conflict. There's a lot of times where there's some gray areas of whether something is or is not a conflict. So if you think you may have any kind of conflict, it's important that you would ask the solicitor, ask me, you know, what I think about that possible conflict before the meeting. If you tell me everything you know about the potential conflict before the meeting, and I give you an answer, you can rely on that. So if I were to say, "No, it's not a conflict, go ahead and participate," and then somebody later says that it is, you're protected, because you gave me the information, I gave you an opinion. So it's important that, you know, don't try to guess, don't hold back, just take me aside, let me know if you have a concern, and then we'll come up with a decision on that. So those are the highlights. If you read the material, which you said you did, do you have any specific questions about what you read, or about what I explained?
It sounds to me like social media could be an issue.
That's funny, they don't talk about that in great length here, and that certainly is a dangerous area, yep, because people tend to just go on as if they think it's not going to ever be seen again.
Yep.
It's there forever.
On social media, are we as individuals liable for something that might be misconstrued as an issue with a planning board?
Yes, I would be really cautious about, first of all, making any comments, again, that show a bias for or against any application or any one. And also trying to give your approval, or saying something that sounds like a great idea.
What if it isn't an issue right now on the table, but becomes one later? You know what I'm saying?
Correct.
Like, if, if somebody says, "Well, I don't want sports betting bar in our town, because I think it's wrong," and then a year from now, sports betting bar puts an application in?
Yeah, you're probably okay with something like that, the same as if you would say, you know, "I think it would be great to have a supermarket in town." Doesn't mean that if one comes up and it's in a horrible spot, you vote no, or if you vote yes, that you're going to have a problem with it. A general opinion like that's okay.
Okay.
But again, like, if you were to say, like I've said before, you know, "The Presbyterian Church would be great, but I don't like Catholic churches," or whatever, something like that is, you have to avoid those kind of comments.
Sticky, sticky wiki, okay.
Whatever, what I always say is, when I do an email or a text before I hit the button, I always assume everybody in the world's going to read it at some point, and ask me about it, so.
Yep.
Never hit that button until you're sure.
Mike, would you...
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
No, I said, "Thank you."
Touch on the communications in the group, the group communications outside the meeting. Lynn sends the, Lynn sends the meeting notice out, and type confirm, I'll be there type of thing, that there should be no two-way conversations between board members. I respond to Lynn, I'm coming to the meeting, is fine, but a two-way conversation beyond that is very sticky.
Right, even a string of conversations about an application is a problem, is a violation of the sunshine law, because all deliberations have to be public. So if you start having those communications, and there appears to be a string where one person to another, or a group response, then that could be a violation.
Right. Okay. Anybody else? Mike, touch on closed sessions for members who may not have been involved with closed sessions in the past. What is a closed session, and what can be talked about before and after?
So there's, the Public Meeting Act has exceptions to the Public Meeting Act, certain things the public doesn't get to watch you deliberate on. Best example is litigation. So if there's a lawsuit, or a potential lawsuit even, then we can discuss that in the closed session, meaning we send the public out, we close the doors, and we can discuss that litigation, what the strategy may be, or you may want to get legal advice from me, so that's an attorney-client privilege, legal advice regarding a matter. And that can be discussed outside of the presence of the public, and it does not have to be revealed until the reason for it being closed is gone. So at the end of the litigation, those minutes can be revealed, but not, say, during the litigation while it's still pending, because that strategy could be something the other party could use. And the board members cannot discuss it with anybody outside of the membership, otherwise you're violating the sunshine law, or violating the executive statute as well. And there actually are penalties for that, civil penalties, if you're violating.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Mike?
No, unless anybody has a question.
The financial, again, we're off the subject a little bit on the JIF, but for people who have not filled out, explain to me what the financial disclosure is, and what are you disclosing, and what happens when you don't fill out your financial disclosure.
I think if you don't fill out your financial disclosure, and they warn you multiple times, you can be removed from the board.
No, they're actually fined. They send a, I know people who didn't fill it out and got fined.
Got fined, yeah.
Yeah, personally fined.
Five hundred dollars or something?
Yep. Yep. So...
I'm not sure what happens if you decide that you, instead of fi, instead of filing that, you rather not be on the board, and you say, "Look, I'm..."
That's an option. I've known people who've done that, too.
Yeah.
So financial disclosure is just that, you're not disclosing the amount of money that you make, you're disclosing your employer, and...
Sources of income.
Sources of income, yeah.
This is interesting.
Sources of income, and your spouse's sources of income. And basically, it's a financial disclosure, the same thing as, you know, the conflict piece, but, you know...
That's typically done in April?
April, usually.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming up.
I know, it's all online, and four years...
Yeah, it's all online, and once you fill it out, all you got to do is go in and check the fact that nothing's changed, and you're done type of thing. So it's no big deal, but the point of bringing it up is that if you don't do it, there's penalties involved.
I think it's overdone, it's a shame, they should just trust people not to have conflicts, rather than assume everybody's dishonest.
I hear you, I hear you. Okay. If you have anything else, Mike, anyone else have questions for Mike? Hearing none, at this time, I entertain a motion to open to the public.
Motion to open public portion.
Second. Second, Mr. Swade?
I second that.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're in public portion, that's...
The law.
Okay, entertain a motion to close public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
I'll second that.
Move and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyway, no closed session tonight, Mike?
No.
All right. Does anybody else have anything to bring, bring up this evening? Oh, Lynn, page two, training session. Lynn, you want to go over that, please?
Yes, I have the signatures, I have the papers for that, and if you've, the other ones that got sworn in, did you pass, sign and pass your papers over?
Done.
Thank you very much, sir. We're still running?
It is.
Yay. We can start off, Mr. Fenton, number one, and Mr. Swade, you're on my second page.
No, look at me.
Right up.
And if I miss anybody, please let me know. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Lynn, what is the training session, and what is it involved?
Is your name there?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
And you, Jeff, it's, it's the whole thing, it's a training session, and you, Jeff.
He's asking for others.
Mr. Clark's name's not on this.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea, I went through that training.
Go down a line from there, and just sign, and I'll, I'll paper your name over there. That's why I bet, it's about email.
He's my, my A key.
I signed it, wanted to say Jim. I have a tree, a perfect master plan, yes, that we have. I should know that thing by heart, to be able to rule on some of these...
Do I need any more from seeing the training?
Probably.
Think this work yet?
Everybody does. I haven't seen anything in a while, everything has been online, so...
Mhm.
Oh, yes, you do. Bye, Ray.
One of the cases when I was... Eight years ago.
You know, so...
All right, whatever you want.